Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I consider it an honor to be here with you today. And I did give you, or leave you a little pen there on your table to let you know that we really do appreciate you and thank you for the job that you do. I know many times the word may not go out, but I appreciate what you do, I really do. Let's look to the Lord in prayer today. Our heavenly Father, we're truly grateful unto you for your many, many blessings upon us, the beauty of the day today, and just your goodness to us, Father. We're truly grateful. Father, I thank you, Lord, for this team of leadership that is before us today. Father, we pray, Lord, that you'll just help them today, have the wisdom of God, the mind of Christ, and, Father, in everything that they do, that you'll just give them direction and guidance and just let everything be worked out peaceably in all their decisions they make. Father, we do appreciate them, and we lift them up today and give blessings to you for them and help them in all that they do, dear Father, and we will truly give you praise. While we're in honor, we'll ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thank you. My apologies, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, we'll get right into our agenda. We have citizens' time. We have three people that signed up. First person is Todd Hyatt.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Good.
My name's Todd Hyatt. I live at 351 Blue Sky Drive with Bill, Virginia. And I'm here, found out that first call, animal services filed for permit to come into the county. I work for Guardian EMS. I've worked there for ten years. They've provided for my family for many years. There's no need for another animal service to come in here. It would hurt us. It would hurt the employees there. Sixty-five, we've got sixty-five employees, and ninety percent of them are With County citizens. And there's not enough business here for another animal service to come in. Y'all bet, you know, before, you've had Trinity come in, you've had numerous other agencies come in. They get here, they see that, you know, they're gonna make millions of dollars out of the With County because there's, the need's not there. Richardson Animal Services already in here with us. I don't know if y'all know that or not, but they're operating in the town, or county. They applied for a license to the town, so, you know, that's already hurting us. And I'm here just to fight for my job and say that there's no need for another animal service in here. We cover backup for With County. We're their second due out. We cover all the George Wood home football games, free of service, you know. And I'd just like to say that I hope y'all can take consideration in not letting them come in because there's no need for them. And if, if it does, it's gonna hurt, hurt us. So, thank you.
Next person is Donnie Widener.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning.
Donnie Widener, Chief Operations Officer for Guardian EMS. I live at 169 Pine Drive. And I have a little letter, can I?
Yes.
Just as kind of a rundown of our services and everything. I think most of y'all are familiar with our service. We've always worked great with the county. We've already got a mutual aid agreement. As far as EMS that we're here with the county, I think it's the best that we've been able to do and everything we've went through in the past couple of years. We're at, I think at a stand now that there's a correspondence time that's got better. There's no rollover calls. If there is, it's already in place, as Todd said. There's first, second, and third due. Just kind of reiterate what Todd was saying is they're really, personally, there's not need for another animal service here in the county. It's just like if you bring in three different hospitals, there's just not enough business for everybody. And so they're just gonna start affecting other agencies. There's other counties that I can give you information on, they're actually looking into this also, one of them being Galax, Grayson, Carroll, where they're actually putting a resolution in to keep other agencies from coming in. Because these other agencies are just trying to come in and feed on, they don't have any local ties. We've been embedded with the community for almost twenty-five, well, next year will be our twenty-fifth year here. And we're embedded in the community, and these other services, as Todd said, Richardson Animal Service, which are out of Marion, they got a business license to the town just recently. We didn't know anything about it. But they only have a physical location here. They're not planning on putting a physical location here. They're gonna stay in Marion, and they want to come in here and, you know, try to take the business away from us. So, as y'all know, I'm dedicated, both paid and volunteer, been doing it going on, I don't wanna say May, but thirty years now. And like I said, this is my life also. But if we could have your support, just to, just to keep it up from other agencies coming into the county, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Donnie. Donnie, I'm gonna take this up now. I know it's, there's a letter in our package now, and I, and I really don't know if we need to give permission for non-ambulatory services. And I'm gonna refer to the county attorney to, to see if we do even need, have to give permission.
Yeah, I'll get to it and get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you all three times.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Guardian's been in a, basically, an essential service for the county. Every time we've ran into problems with another, with a rescue squad, the Guardian has always stepped up and provided that service. Anytime that the county, during my tenure, been here, anytime that I've asked, or the county's asked, or I've asked on the county behalf, they've been more than responsive in helping us and doing what it takes to be sure the citizens of the county are covered. And we've always, Donnie appreciated that, and Guardian's done a great job for us. And as, the reason I don't think we've ever had to take up Richardson that's in the town now is they don't have a physical location in the county, and it sort of circumvents the rules of asking whether they can, need a certificate of need from the county, so. But...
And I don't know, maybe, I don't know if something to look into, but I know the city of Galax, they're doing a resolution, and basically this says that the animal services and the, the, already the rescue squads, where they're already practicing or already doing, they're in county, they're making a resolution that that's the primary services. I don't know how to put the word this, but where no one else can come in. They're actually doing a resolution for the city of Galax. Keep this other animal service out. I don't feel bad.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into that and discuss it.
Resolution or something.
Okay.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Oh. Is Richardson being dispatched for a 911?
No, no. No, there is another private animal service that's just kind of coming into the county. But no, they're not being dispatched. We're the only ones that's being dispatched to the county.
Who?
They're connected with our mutual aid contract, that's the only reason.
Non-ambulatory service, you're saying the nursing homes are, are just calling them to do transports?
Not emergency transportation. Dallas's, Dr. Bid, and so forth like that. And I don't know what the intentions of, I know, like I said, and I made it speak out loud, but I do know first call, there are history that they'd like to come in and take over all the business. 911, so that's a going, it may affect the rescue squads in the later in the future. That's why the city of Galax is putting a resolution in now to stop that from the future. So, I know their history, they may come in and try to take some of the emergencies, and I, you know, from there, I don't know.
But now, Mr. Chairman, that is one thing that the board decides, is who, who 911 dispatches and who they don't dispatch, and the territory that they have.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I don't know if you could do like a resolution to keep this from, you know, from another animal service or another agency trying to come in and, you know, do this in the future or...
The only, where's this first call group out of? I mean, I, I saw the board package and, and read it over. They didn't identify where they were coming from.
They actually took over Lifeline Animal Services. You remember what Lifeline was in Christianburg, based out of Christianburg area?
Yeah, one place on the national, where? National Division.
Okay, so, but they have no local ties at all, so.
Yeah.
But they just, they just see there's a business opportunity, and they just try to go in and try to disrupt the EMS system and go from there.
Sounds like they're sending letters everywhere and hoping to get a few yeses on it.
They are, they are. And like I said, Carroll, Grayson's already got the ball on the third board. They're actually supposed to have a meeting in the very near future, if they've not already had it, to put this resolution in place to keep them from, from coming in.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me make sure I understand what, what your request to the county attorney was, is to see whether or not the board has to approve a non-ambulatory ambulance service coming in?
Correct.
So like transportation and, and that sort of thing, like Mr. Widener was talking about? Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thanks for being here.
Next person's Ms. Linda Myers.
Good morning, gentlemen. Here's an article that's very interesting about pathway C technology, and I thought I'd like to perhaps look at it and then pass it along to the school board. I see the gentleman, the new superintendent's going to be here. I'll have some extra coffee, if, if it might help. Okay, thank you.
Is that all, Ms. Myers?
Yes.
Okay, with no one else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Come on up and state your name.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Maybe old age and ignorance, I should've signed it.
Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Larry Lindsay. I live in Merle Retreat. The reason I'm here today is I'm representing my son, who lives on Old State Road, where the water line, and you tell me, Mr. Lindsay, I started this recently, a year or so ago. He had a sinkhole on his property which was used as a landfill, eastern tank. I approached them as they came out South Fork and started at the Old State Road, concerning that if they would like, they could place material back on his property. And the only stipulation that I, and I talked to the superintendent, who I had worked for while working for the town of Withfield, and that's another story. Anyway, I addressed him, and I told him, I said, "Mr. Sora, I'll take that one, show you the place." He said, uh, he went and looked at it. It was great, right what they needed, down below Johnny Lane about a hundred and fifty yards, it wasn't really being handed for. Plus, they was hitting the lot with the soil. So anyway, they, they built it. They used it for five or six months. Now, in the meantime, right across the road, my brother-in-law owned a lot there, and he had a gentleman come in from Max Medical or Fort Hills or somewhere and take out, excuse me, and cut slope there and laid it back so he could put a entrance in there later on in town to the county water system. Mr. Sora, the superintendent, said, I told him that I wanted him to, when they got through it, we asked the day who has graded and put some topsoil or some material on it and see. Well, they went on, and my brother-in-law had that part of it hauled off, what they took off that cut slope, they brought right across the road and put it in our, on my boy's, in that same landfill side. And the superintendent asked me, he said, "Larry, do you all and your son," and he had talked to my son previously, sometimes, about it, and he said, "I'll, I'll stay back, and we'll let your brother-in-law just put his good material, which was good clay material, over on the side, and we'll use it for the grading material." In the meantime, they were going out Johnny Lane, and of course, I don't have to tell y'all how they improved that, it's super difficult. They needed some material, which that's, good material stored on the side of the slope. And so they hauled a little bit out there and took out Johnny Lane, which was fine with my son. About November, or the last October, November of two thousand fourteen, they moved a D4 dozer in there and had, had good intentions to grade it up, and I feel sure they did. But weather turned bad, rain, snow, it's late at all winter, and that's, that's what transpired here until February. I've been to the offices several times, and I've run that out there, and they've been very helpful. Also, Billy came out and looked at it, and they left stumps about ten feet on the property line separating Jeff Duncan and my boy's property. And they were gonna bury those, but they couldn't get, get to it on account of weather, and they came with a little boy and moved it to Hill. They have since been over there, and I don't, for maybe a year or so. But I asked them if we possibly, the county had the change, you know, because I was worried about the wood, and the absolute wood was coming back. I've been there and done that. And sure enough, I called them January and February, and said, "Be two or three weeks, you know, just two or three weeks. We get the dozer down, we get over there." And that's transpired all summer. I talked to him yesterday, and I guess he may be the co-owner, or he may be, I don't know, he's over this department of cleaning up and grading and straightening up projects once you've finished. But he told me probably be at least November before he could get back. And, you know, this is the fourth or fifth time that I've talked to him and he told me the same thing. I know y'all got a lot of things coming up, and I don't want to bog you down here, but I told him, his name was Ted, Mr. Taylor, and I said, "Mr. Taylor, it looks to me like that you people, I thought you had good intentions here, but I'm not sure this is the full time you put us off." And it grew up, he wanted to make, just make hay off of it, but Mr. Duncan does that work, and he couldn't, he has to stay eight or ten or twelve feet away from the fence, because these old stumps and, and tree lands that they was going burying, that's still on top of the ground. And I, as far as, we're not trying to be a problem to the county, and we just would like to see if we can get it straightened up, and I don't know if I'm doing the right thing. I may have, I should, might have, should have addressed Steve or somebody else, and not bothered y'all with this. But anyway, I appreciate anything, or give us some information, or the right direction for us to go, and we'll be glad to work with the county or do anything we can.
Okay.
I told my son, I'm representing him. His name's Tracy M. Lindsay, and he lives on Old State Road. The fiscal address, I think, is thirty-nine oh two or something like that. But anyway, I appreciate anything you could do on that line.
Okay. Mr. Lindsay, I'm sure Mr. Dalton and Mr. Ball will, will look into it and, and see what, Bill, do you know anything about, about it? Okay.
Okay, I appreciate it. I will say that Billy, you came out and looked at it, and, you know, that's back in the spring, early part. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and we would appreciate it.
We'll see what we can get to that. Thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else speak during citizens' time? Here and then, I'll close citizens' time. We'll move right on into agenda of approval of the July the fourteenth minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the minutes as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, correction, or changes need to be made to the minutes?
Was there some change that we got this?
The addition of the...
Do you want? Oh, okay. Okay.
So you want to have any questions?
There's a thing being there that Artie and I just met at the bank. I mean, it's, it sort of is if you look at it right, because we both voted in the last thing that, in the front of it, we were both missing, we were both out. I don't know what the name is, or whatever.
So, does that need to be added to the minutes that they were present? I know they, they voted at the end.
I assume you can make a notation prior to this resolution. Mr. Horni, Mr. Hall, in closing. I just want to have a sentence in front of that.
I think it'd be best we had that they were present at the closed meeting.
So we're amending the motion to include that?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and amend my motion to approve the minutes with that one inclusion. Clarification.
Do I have a second to amend the minutes?
Second.
Any more discussion, corrections, or changes? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes six to one absent. Paving of invoices entertained.
Maybe we should pave any...
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any invoice any board member would like to discuss? Here and then, do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next on the agenda is presentation from George Wood High School track team, and I have a proud dad over here that I will let do the honors of presenting the resolution. Meredith? Ms. Storms, would you like to come up for Abby? Oh, check in. It's Embarrass Your Child Day. No, you can come up here. All right, these kids are fast and can jump, and in fact, it's very difficult to get them all together in one room, so. Football has started, so the coaches could not be here. Band camp has started and all the fall stuff, so she was the only one that wasn't doing anything. As a father, I was able to watch this team of five girls from middle school up do the unthinkable and compete against schools with thirty and forty girls, and compete admirably so that the opposing coaches at the end of the state meet, came up and had their picture taken with them. So, that being said, whereas the George Wood Girls Track Team competed a spectacular twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen season, and whereas the George Wood High School Girls Track and Field Team advanced to the Virginia High School League Group One-A State Outdoor Track and Field Championship, and whereas the George Wood High School Track and Field Team surpassed the competition, earning the designation as Virginia High School League One-A State Outdoor Track and Field Champions for the second year. And whereas, the team members, Meredith Willis, won individual state championship titles in the one-hundred meter dash, two-hundred meter dash, and triple jump, shattering the previous state records in two of these events. And whereas, Tyra Hedgepath, Bria Lampkins, Abby Storms, and Meredith outran the opposition to a first-place finish and state championship in the girls' four-by-one-hundred relay. And whereas, the George Wood High School Girls Track and Field Team completed an extraordinary season and displayed outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. And whereas, the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends the George Wood High School Girls Track and Field Team comprised of Jasmine Harbor, Tyra Hedgepath, Bria Lampkins, Abby Storms, Meredith Willis, Coach Brandon Blankenship for their exemplary twenty-fourteen, fifteen season. Now, therefore be it resolved, With County Board of Supervisors present this resolution to the George Wood High School Girls Track and Field Team in recognition and appreciation of their achievements, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors.
Did you get your picture, Martha? Uh, Steve?
Steve? I'm not going anywhere.
Wait, could you get Meredith back up for a picture? I don't think Martha quite got it.
If you would buy her tennis shoes to run in, she'd probably run fast.
She's got more experience than you, Steve.
I know Steve is proud, and the rest officers are proud, and very appreciative of all that the track team and all the sports has done at George Wood in the past several years, and it will retreat. The rising... Okay, moving right on the agenda, unfinished business. We have the With County.
Make a motion to approve?
Oh, wet rat. Forgot.
You want to make a motion?
You want to make a motion? We approve the resolution.
Oh.
We better do it official here. Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution passes now in the unfinished business. We have the With County twenty-fifteen dash oh one electronic summons, request for clarification. We put the general district court and circuit court, but we didn't name juvenile domestic in the, in the ordinance.
Well, it was discussed in the meeting. The add, the person that had the sign.
Didn't have it.
Didn't have that addition, and I would prefer the county attorney wouldn't even have another public hearing. That's a matter of clarification, because it says each clerk, prior to that, is applying a particular. And he, he said, that might be clear today, I'll get it on, but I would say generally to be overly cautious, you'd re-advise the whole hearing, amend the ordinance and have that in there to make sure it's proven, versus just adding it, you know, just changing the ordinance and saying that that's what we intended when one signs on, does officially the ordinance. But I think once that happens, we ought to amend the ordinance and add J.R. Court.
Okay, Mr. Dalton, can we add the public hearing on August the twenty-fifth? Does any board member have any questions about the ordinance, or what we're having another public hearing to clarify? Okay, here and then, we run along the general reassessment meeting schedule for August the twenty-sixth, twenty-fifteen, and that's Fay and Mr. Dalton and myself.
Yes, we will have a contract that will start negotiating by that day. And I hope we'll have a copy of the county attorney in the September meeting. We'll have a contract ready to get started for the twenty-seventh reassessment.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
If anybody's got anything special concerning that, the next board meeting, you will have a copy of the current land use ordinance to discuss and go through and see if there's any changes from the twenty-seventeenth reassessment. We'll have to have a public hearing to modify it, too.
Okay, next on the agenda is rural retreat late, contract meeting scheduled for August the eighteenth, twenty-fifteen. the 18th, 2015.
That will be at Marion DGI headquarters at the Tom Hampton, I think, DGI, the land agent from Richmond. Our community leads, Mr. Hammond, myself. Get it, if you're on that.
I'll go. What time is it? Unless Mr. Hausman wants to fill it in his district.
I, it doesn't matter, I'll be glad to. This is about, when is the, when is the contract, I mean, or the lease officially?
Last time took about a year and a half of the minutes. So this is the start of a long process. So we've got about a year and a half or so to get this done. And it'll take every day of that.
Okay. That's August the 18th?
Yes.
What time?
He said he'd send an email.
Oh, okay.
I believe it's 10:00 AM, but we're meeting up at Marion.
Okay. I mean, I'll, if, if, if you want to direct me, I'll, I'll be glad to go, yeah.
Okay, update on county administrator's search. That's myself. We have, went through this first round of interviews. We're in this week, we're doing the second round of interviews. And we'll finish them up today. Then the board will be reconvene, recessed today and reconvene on Thursday at five o'clock.
Four thirty.
Four thirty. And to discuss and go over the candidates that we've interviewed. That's our update on the county administrator's search. Mr. Dalton, we have anything else under other, under unfinished business? Okay, moving on to reports. Have the Treasury report from Mr. Sam Crockett.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Sam.
The liquid tax report that we give each year at the end of the year of what we've done throughout the year. You want water or not? I'm just going to skip. What this does is gives you breakdown of the collections we've collected since June the 30th on the first one for fourteen, that shows how much the liquid tax we have. And then the other two shows the years, how much we've collected over the year. And I've got a total of here in my report, I think it's 37. Of course, consolidated account report in the year of fifty-one million, one hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in our accounts. Our general fund balance, we're at twenty-seven million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And even as far as our local collections this year, we've collected a total of eighteen million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Our collections grew up about two hundred thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars above our budget figure. We collected one-hundred and one percent of our budget. Our lodging tax, we exceeded that by seventeen thousand of what our budget was. There's two lodging taxes on there, and another one is that break down, and another one exceeded one-hundred and thirteen thousand. Our meals tax did very well this year, we've exceeded our budget on that by fifty-one thousand dollars. The only thing we're really down on this place is that student vermisses, of course, the economy's been so bad that they were down to a bit, didn't make quite good. Throughout the year, we collected a total of five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars of the liquid tax. A hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of PLD, a hundred and ninety-six dollars worth of interest. And we've got a total of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars worth of the liquid tax penalty interest this year. Does pretty, we had that one off from sale, and then we've got another one coming up in off in December, I hope it's going to be in December. And Mr. Campbell's working on this. We sent out, I sent him another batch of twenty-five names, a few, it's like twenty-five or thirty records at a time that he's working on. First batch was real good on those. We had our treasurer's summons meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the three didn't show up prior to that. We had three paid in full, and four, five, and six of them came in, signed contracts. That summons worked pretty good. I've never tried it before, but that does work pretty good. And so I sent him another list of twenty-five, two days ago, to start on another batch. Hopefully we'll get some cleaned up that way.
Thank you, Sam. Do I have any questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks.
Now, he's remitting all the money. We have, the board will have during the year when he sends a bill, amend and appropriate that to your budget. Just so everybody knows.
You're the Google, I guess, the professional services line item for that, yeah.
We didn't know the exact cost of what this was going to be.
No, no way, no one goes, you know, how much you collect.
So during the year, on the consent, when Sammy gets a bill, he will submit to the county administrator, that'd be put on the consent, amend and appropriate to his professional services.
May I ask one question? Mr. Crockett, you were talking about sending, that he said twenty-five, thirty names at a time. I understand that. Is there any, is there any rhyme or reason to, to the twenty-five?
It was the most money in the last years. And I've got two stacks of the liquid taxes that I've got, I'll go through and add them all up and look at the years.
Good, okay.
A million dollars. And the ones that are the most, I see them first.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fay, I know you're not on agenda. Do you have anything? Thank you. It's cool, so then Dr. Perry, I don't see him here. Okay. Budget committee report.
I'll do the budget committee report. So the budget committee met on July 23rd, 2015. We have two recommendations. The first is to make application to the With Land Foundation for Grants. We have two requests, and they would be ranked in the following order. The first one, emergency services, vehicle matching funds. And then the second, the multipurpose fields. So that's the recommendation from the budget committee.
Okay, we'll take the first one up. Come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Open the floor for discussion. Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Then the second recommendation is to make application for funding through House Bill Two for the addition of exits forty-one and eighty-one to the Virginia Department of Transportation Primary Six-Year Plan.
I open the floor, come from committee, it doesn't need a second, I open the floor for discussion. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that the right exit?
Exit forty-one, eighty-one.
I think we'll put more detail on that for everybody in the room. The exit eighty-one, it's the interchange for eighty-one, or seventy-seven percent of eighty-one at the salary on every weekend. There's a huge traffic back up. This past weekend, all weekend long. What happens there, usually we don't get into the making applications for interstates. But under House Bill Two, the rules have changed, counties make, and PDCs and others can make applications. While that doesn't really help local citizens, it does move all that traffic through and lessen the possibility of accidents. And we have, I've been a part of the committee, Wayne Sutherland, Tim Reeves. Spent a lot of money, the cost estimates are already out there. The previous money allocated to fix that interchange by dual lane and all the way down to exit eight. And VDOT has suggested that we make this application. It's no local dollars. It's just, it needs to be an application to get on the new House Bill Two planning back, which will be the six-year plan.
Can you want to explain exit forty-one?
And the other exit is, we're currently in the process of designing a direct link back up on Pepper's Ferry Road to exit forty-one. And we had a letter from VDOT that said they would need improvements to forty-one. Along comes this House Bill Two, which says that everything's off the table, you've got to start from the new, and this could be an application to at least get on the six-year plan for fixing that interchange. And with this exit, you directly from progress park.
Anyone have any questions? Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is county administrator's report.
The first item is a letter from Kevin Aston, because the labor retreat late operates. He spends all of his money, or half his money, July first, Labor Day, right after that. And then from May through June, last part of the year, there's no problem appropriating that he's run out of money to keep that operating. They asked about the second quarter appropriating.
Okay, I entertain a motion to have the second quarter appropriated.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Any other discussion?
As, as a seasonal thing, I can see where that happens.
Here and then, do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Do you have anything else, Mr. Dalton?
I'll wait until other new business, others, if I may.
Okay. Board supervisor's report. District One, Black Lake District, Dr. Hausman?
Not anything today.
District Two, West Whipple?
Don't have anything today.
District Three, East Whipple?
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
District Four, Fort Chisels, not here. District Five, Leadman's? District Six, people?
I do not have anything at this time.
I did have, and at large, I did have one request to see if VDOT can scrape Hogback Road.
If I may add to your, I was out looking this weekend on some dirt road. Might be a great time to ask, a little chemicals to be put down on these discs, etc.
I'll request that, too.
Especially if you're putting on the dirt road. I don't even know where the road is.
Okay, does anyone have anything else?
I think I have something I would like to ask. I got a talk from Terry Crawford about the water. When, when is the water going mixing like?
Yeah.
You tell him, Jim?
Yeah, I had forgotten about it. I was gonna say, I thought, I thought I saw it in his report.
Mr. Vaughn says we're almost through with letter conditions. The funding has been signed completely, approved in half. And Mr. McCraper was more than happy to help with that, he's to get their last key.
Yeah, I'm gonna kill him. I'm gonna kill him. Hope Dean, Dean, Dean gets you.
Well, you were helping, Mr. Horni.
Oh, yeah.
So it appears we've got one easel and some papers.
I have empty, I've listened to that two, three years, Dave. I have empty.
But the line, I do know, that in the kitchen will picture all the signs completely approved. We're just waiting for the last to be read.
Anything else?
You are.
Okay, here and then, we'll go into old business, I mean, new business, excuse me. We have the consent calendar. Entertain a motion to approve this consent calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any other discussion? And this is the consent count for July the 28th, 2015. Here and then, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is the delinquent tax list request for approval to publish. You had the list in your board package. I'll entertain a motion to approve to publish.
I'll make that motion to approve to publish.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay, any discussion?
Since you have much of this people paid to come in, if they've been stricken from this list, or you need to strike.
I read a paid list yesterday, and I don't think any of the ones that are paid are on paid or fourteen. But I did run an updated list yesterday to check that, so that it was going to be in the board meeting today. So what we've been collecting is old taxes. Eight, nineteen, I guess, but it's not fourteen.
So this, this list is just fourteen?
This list is the only fourteen, and it's, I read the list yesterday, it's up to date.
Okay. Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. First call in, the service we've already took care of. Anything else under other, Mr. Dalton? Okay, here and nothing else. Entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the With County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing I ask, I thought you said you had something to bring up during new business?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session. Okay, I entertain a motion to have closed session.
No, I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Opposed?
All right, whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative reported vote in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. And therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
A second on certification?
Second.
Any discussion? Do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. So certified. Anything else to bring forward to board at this time?
Could we, while he's looking for that, could we recess? Or could we go into closed session and then recess and just meet over there?
That's what we're going to do.
Go into closed session here and there?
I was wondering if there's anything we need to, in open session.
Yes, there is. Did we get that email, Martha? See, where she did with that paper, what you gave him from the retreat paper?
Oh, good.
Yep.
Good. I was going to bring that up. I didn't, yeah.
Scott, did you have a chance to ever check and find out if we can appoint somebody to the fair board? Or if, if a member can be on the fair board? Did you ever find out anything about the, I, I said it was the health inspections for restaurants that you were gonna check on, but it was actually not.
I thought there was a pack of cigarettes. I thought, I'd never seen him with a pack.
Hey, Coy or thing?
Coy. He had that, uh, red thing, looked like a pack of Winstons or something.
Who was it? Was it, man? I wasn't touching it. It's just laying up next to us.
It's that magnetic personality it was interfering with.
You're laying it too close to the? To what? To the, to the box. Boy, I had to click on it. I think it's something like that, what they were, what she was wanting to do was? What time's that? Yeah.
What time is the airport meeting?
Is wanting to make it like an awards thing. That way, you know, if you, if you've gotten good, good reviews that, or good inspections, then you'd get credit for it, sorta.
When are we meeting that? I know we're not meeting at the airport.
Mary, uh, administration.
What time you all gotta be there?
Two.
Eleven.
For those that don't remember, Mr. Ray is his now grandpa.
Yep.
Is this your first one?
Yep.
What took you so long?
Three thousand miles away. I don't know. Let's see, Timothy's twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Timothy's twenty-eight.
What's the name of this?
Hudson Alexander. Where everybody come up with that at? I had no idea. I told him I was gonna call him HA.
You know, if he's a westward cadet, I can say, understand why it was the Hudson River, but since he's a Navy guy, I can't understand.
I know where he got the Alexander, cause her name is, her name is Alexandria or something like that. Lauren Alexandria, and we call her Alexa. His mother. But he's doing well. Not as fussy. I don't think the guy needs sleep a couple of nights at first.
Hey, Gary, I guess when we're waiting, uh, the, uh, the audit thing went really smooth since you weren't there to ask any questions.
Well, I got an update on it, uh, standing in the line at Funeral Home from West Po.
Hold there. Well, they're gonna put the presentation on line, so we're gonna email it to you as soon as they send it to you.
Okay, good.
It still wouldn't be like sitting in it, you know? Close to it.
The Hausman disowned me last Friday. He said I was such a poor golfer, that he, he would not let me ride with him.
Well, I, the, but the one thing I will say is that, uh, there were only three of us on our team, and the golfer they put with us was actually a real person.
Well, you played Captain's Choice, didn't you?
Yeah.
So I mean, you only had to use that golfer. Yeah, but when three of yous no good. Surely one of the three could hit a good ball over now and then.
Well, actually, yeah, we, a lot of times they had four bad shots because we had to alternate taking that, uh, uh, you know, that, that fourth shot.
I think that was about like the time me and Jerry played at the J I D A tournament.
Oh.
Maybe I oughta go get my golf clubs back out and start playing then if everybody's that bad.
We.
The miracle was, the whole day, we were only one over five.
Yeah.
We weren't the worst thing happening.
No, no, we weren't, which was, was, was good. And I did hit a wrong birdie putt on last hole. I just can't, I said, it's gonna be my last putt of the day. I swear the day on thing will be.
Did it go through the clown's mouth, or?
Well, I swear we should've been, we should've been playing with the windmills and, and stuff. But no, I tell you, after Slay got warmed up, he started knocking the heck out of that ball. Except on one hole, far ways were close to each other, and I saw this ball way, way out there. I said, is that your drive? Yep. Well, somebody hitting from the, but he was gonna take credit for it. I, yeah.
Did, do you find what we were preparing for session? Okay. Like, shh. Don't do me no good to pick it up, though, can't, I think I've already seen this.
Thank you.
So how much out of seventy-nine hundred do you wanna suggest we, uh, we give to them? Dean and Gary?
What, um, did I read somewhere, or, or some kind of report somewhere, that it, it costs maintenance? What I mean by that is mowing electricity and, and, and things like that cost ten thousand a year, is that? Did I just make that number up, or did I see it somewhere?
There's, there is a figure, something like that, I think, out there somewhere. But one of their biggest expenses, let's allow, one of their biggest expenses is their insurance. And I don't understand why it costs them so much for insurance. Who they got it through? But I mean, the Glade Mountain Saddle Club's got insurance, and I mean, we've got horses. And ours is nothing compared to what they're paying.
Maybe they're still paying insurance based on the fact that they would have rides.
I don't know. But they also have, I think they've got like three different insurance policies. They've got one that covers people at the events. They've got one that covers the, the buildings. And then they've got another one that covers the directors. So. I mean, I don't know, somebody told, somebody said if they were an LLC, they wouldn't have to have the insurance on the directors.
Well, they got, they gotta be a five oh one three C because we at least can tell them that was part of the agreement. You can't give money to anybody except the nonprofit.
So are they non, do, do they still have their nonprofit status?
I could not tell you that.
I, I, I would make a wild guess that they do.
I know there's certain things that do. I mean, you still have.
A lot of tax form. If they're not.
Well.
Matthew's part of this group.
Matthew, which one? Matthew Miller is, and, or I think Matthew Miller is, and Matthew Heldrich both are, I believe.
I know Miller, no, but, and Heldrich probably maybe, but he hasn't been involved with a lot of nonprofits.
I want, I don't, do you all read the Retreat Minutes Town Meeting? Okay.
You told me to read that.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna share this with you on the, uh, this, they, they were talking in, uh, Tim Litz asked about a report on the Fiddlers Convention. And so this is, this is what it says. Councilman Hash asked Councilmember Lloyd how the Fiddlers Convention turned out. Count, Councilmember Lloyd explained the rain hurt the event, but he thought the Fair Association broke even, even though they didn't receive money from With County. There was a good crowd on Saturday, and it did go smooth, should be believed, but, um, Councilmember Lloyd explained participants came from Florida, North Carolina, Tennessee, West Virginia, New York, and South Carolina. He stated, he also announced the sponsors for the event and announced the town of Retreat donated two thousand dollars, and With County gave nothing. Which is irritating to me. Did they ask?
Not, I don't think they asked this year specifically for the Fiddlers Convention. Now, last year they did, didn't they? Didn't we give them money for the Fiddlers Convention?
We gave them twenty-five hundred bucks, and Pam didn't give them anything last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they, they did come in budget time and ask for money. But that's the only time they asked.
But they didn't ask for an amount during budget time.
Pam said we liked money. They didn't ask, they didn't say.
But when, when was the Fiddlers Convention? Cause I.
July fourth.
Oh, okay. Cause I was going, I started, I was thinking it was in June, and I was gonna say, well, you know, it technically was before we even finalized our budget.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna make a.
Monday after, before they paid Jim this.
I'm gonna make a, 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 a motion, or y'all want me to explain the motion before I make it?
Make it, didn't you?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna make this motion that we give for one year, this year, Retreat Fair Association, ten thousand dollars.
Have a second.
And, and then I'll explain why. It can be voted up or down, I, you know?
Have a second.
I'll second it.
All right, now, my, my reasoning for this is, as I said, you know, one year, you know, we are trying to encourage people. This is stupid stuff. Uh, I mean, you know, but it, it does build real, real wheel. I, and I know that you all know as well as I do that, you know, the towns and the counties, even though you get along okay, there's still a little bit of animosity, you know, between them. But the reason I'm saying ten thousand dollars for one year, I'm not, not a yearly thing, but, you know, but for this year is that they have reorganized, they've got new people in, they are apparently making an effort to, uh, uh, you know, to make the Fair Association go, not just the fair, but the Fair Association. I know that we, you know, that, uh, that, you know, that they have the land and, and that sort of thing, but if we give them ten thousand dollars this year and we say, okay, this is basically enough to cover your, you know, uh, your operating costs, not the special events where you should be bringing in money, but operating costs for one year, so this will give you all a buffer for one year to show what you can do, if you can actually turn it around, and if you can make it a profitable, uh, a, a profitable endeavor. I didn't see an email.
No, I, I just sent a, a message to Leslie, uh, just when y'all asked about the five oh one C three, and said, are you still a five oh one C three? And she says, hi, no, we are not. We are getting the paperwork together for next year.
That's why I was praying, uh, probably had, nobody kept it up. And they filed the tag, wonderful thing.
So is it illegal for you to give to anybody but the nonprofit?
How?
Is it illegal for the town or retreat?
We won't worry about town, they can do what they want.
All right.
Well, just, well, I'll let them know that, you know, until they.
I'll amend that motion that when they receive a five oh three, si, five oh one three C, that we, uh, uh, you know, we allot ten thousand dollars for one, for one year.
Excuse me. I have a second on the amendment of motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Now, for, for more discussion.
I, I, I'd say we, you know, we take it as, um, as each event, you know, comes. I'm not, I, I'm, I'm not, you know, saying do this to the exclusion of, uh, uh, you know, of everything else. And, and I'm not talking about, uh, a yearly, uh, a yearly thing. I'm, uh, talking about, you know, one time to say, all right, you all say that you're trying, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna help and give you the opportunity to succeed. If you succeed, that's great. And if not, we're not, uh, uh, you know, that's not, that's not a yearly stipend.
Why not make them a loan of ten thousand dollars?
Cause the county can't loan.
We can't loan money, can we? No.
We can have a small business loan.
Joint IDA revolving account.
It, it's really not the issue of, uh, you, 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 not, I guess this will be updated. They're real not, they're just a group of people that know their fine mission, except we're gonna hold this resurrect, the Retreat Fair Association. You know, they gave, well, thirty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five last year for the Fiddler's Convention. When we asked for the documentation, there was no documentation, except Vicki Sprouse's letter that we lost, warm money that he gave us. At the end of that, it, 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 I think, not a group, it's really organized, except Fluson, it said, wow, is everybody, every organization from Imanho, Max Meno is, be holding a circus next week to come actually for a month. They have no budget, they have no anything except the budget, which is, we'd like some.
I thought they sent a budget. On my say, I've been told they did.
They had that letter that asked for support from Nate. I knew it was presentation.
Jordan Huh?
Jordan.
Say, I remember Cheeseburger coming and talking.
You know, I was, I was going down there, you look at these prices, you're competing against the gay like Fiddler's Convention there on Saturday night, you're paying a band fifteen hundred dollars. Must be a good. I don't know who they are.
They're pretty good. I mean, they're locally, they'll get people there.
They're pretty good.
That's actually a cheap price for that band, because after they agreed to come to the, to this, they've gotten a recording contract, if I'm not mistaken.
They're local, I mean, they're Retreat guys.
Right.
But you still are competing against them.
I was paying that band that fifty dollars, we must have given you.
I mean, are we, are we giving any money other than Chicago? And should we even give Chicago?
I mean, you put back in, what, forty thousand back into our budget, the Board of Supervisors from that eighty thousand, but we haven't, we haven't give any out to the nonprofits yet.
We had $80,000 in resigns, we cut that back, put it in that other fund for, for y'all to make a name issue. They were doing, I think, I guess what we haven't done is come up with that list of criteria that you're supposed to devise.
So we have any more discussion? I almost forgot, we had a motion on the floor.
I accept, I, yeah, I make that as a motion. If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, I understand that. But, you know, and if we need to, you know, set criteria, we set, you know, set criteria. But I think that if we've got a group in With County that, even if they are loosely organized, maybe they'll, you know, yeah, they will get more organized, because, I tell you, and please don't take this the wrong way, we were dealing with a loosely organized group when we were starting to deal with this Ag Expo Center. I mean, yeah, it, it was beyond loosely organized, and we're in the process of spending, you know, trying to spend $1.3 million and then get, you know, grants, you know, for, for all that. So if we're just talking about loosely organized, you know, people, I, I don't, I, I don't think that that's a criteria for saying no.
Loosely organized, they are a 501(c)(3), they do it before and correct.
I am, right, and I'm not advocating any money to them, you know, for, until, you know, their, their tax exempt status.
I think right now, for me, I would probably feel more comfortable that they did that, because you said, I mean, we, all we have is a text message or an email, but next year? I mean, does that mean $2,000?
I don't know how, I just sent her back a message, I'm not just asking her. She said that Mike Sobe is on their board, and he is working with them on getting that reinstated, but she doesn't know what the timeframe would be.
I was going to say, if it takes as long as the fire, Spiegel Fire Department did, it'll take a while.
Thank you, well.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll call for a question.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Will you restate it, please?
Yeah, that, you know, in an effort to help jumpstart them, that for one year, we, we allot Retreat Fair Association $10,000 to cover their operating costs when and if they achieve nonprofit status.
And you're, and Gene seconded. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Can I ask a question before we vote? Real quick. Sorry, but does there need to be a stipulation on there of a certain timeframe? I mean, like, a year, five years, or is this something that's?
Well, whatever his motion is, it's with this year, because once you get to another fiscal year.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I, I just wanted to make.
Clarification for you, or not?
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that was going to be continued on.
Hang on forever.
Twenty years down the road, and then somebody comes back and says, well, y'all said you'd give us this when we got it.
Your board action, one board can't commit this as.
Right.
Dead service.
Okay. All right. Okay. Aye.
No.
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 Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. Well, no time. Goes to the next meeting. Okay, anything else? Before we go back into closed session?
I'm not, because it gave us some clarification.
Okay, I entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel.
All right, I, oh yeah. You have to read this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make, do you mind if I do it? I move that the With County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, personnel matter involving consideration or interviews of candidates for employment.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in closed session.